Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll open the meeting up for public hearing for our Code of Conduct Policy 2019, 2020. No comments from the public or the board? Okay, we'll close our public hearing and we'll move into public comment. Because we can't get anybody to say anything.
There's something happening here. What is this? She's gonna surprise us.
And at this time, um, we have a new student rep here tonight, and Lisa, would you like to swear her in?
Isabella? I'm gonna have you raise your right hand, okay, just compete after me. I'm gonna swear you in as student rep for the Board of Education.
You know what, hang on, can we do it in front of the class?
Absolutely.
They're a better show.
Raise your right hand and then you can compete after me, okay? Aye, Isabella?
Isabella.
Say a lesson.
Periodically.
Do Salmy swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Salmy swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York?
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And my position as student rep for the Highland Central School District?
My position as student rep for the Highland Central School District.
Board of Education of the best to my abilities?
The Board of Education to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations!
Isabella, on behalf of the board, we welcome you to Board of Education as our student rep, and hopefully you'll have a very enjoyable season here with us. We're hoping that you're gonna bring to the table a lot of things that the board's waiting to hear from all your constituents throughout the district, and maybe we can help in any way possible to make their lives here in Highland Central School District a lot better. So we appreciate you taking your time to serve on this board. I know some of our meetings are long, but if you have any conflicts as far as an exam the next day and you need to leave a little early, you select one of us to know beforehand, or pitch out here, or put your agenda, your report up front, and then you can leave, okay? So congratulations again, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Acceptance of reports. Be resolved, Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent approves the technology reviewing the following reports: Our Board of Education meeting minutes August 6th and August 20th, 2019; Treasury Report, June 2019; Internal Claims Audit Report, June 2019; Rule Warrant Number 106. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, seconded by Mike. Discussion?
Well, I had a comment. Did we just blow by the public hearing for the Code of Conduct policy?
Well, we did.
Yes, we did. We closed it, yeah.
The opening closed it.
Wow, that was fast.
It was.
Trying to log in. Anyway, thank you for the reports.
Any comments on the acceptance of reports? Good? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
I need to abstain. I didn't do my homework.
Okay. All right, under personnel, do you have any issues taking personnel as a block from A through J? Everybody fine with that?
Good.
I have a motion to take personnel as a block. Motion by Heather, seconded by Ed. Discussion? Anyone wanna pull one out for a standalone, or we're good?
They were good.
Okay. No discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay, abstain?
To abstain. Mr. President, actually, we do have, though, we only had, we had one new hire here, she wasn't able to make it, but we do have one of our new teacher hires that wasn't able to make a previous board meeting, so Cornelia is here, so could you just stand up and tell the board your name and what your position is?
Hi, I'm Cornelia Harris. I'm teaching seventh grade sciences.
It's a new seventh grade science teacher from middle school.
Congratulations.
Congratulations and welcome. Thanks for coming.
Guess what, Isabella? You're up. Quick.
That's true.
So, good evening. I'm really excited to be joining the Board of Ed for this next school year. So this past Thursday, the sixth, you guys all know, was the district's first day of school, and it went very well. Students are adjusting back to school schedule and the start of extracurriculars are already underway. In the middle of high school, we have clubs already meeting for their first meetings and getting back into the swing of it. Our JV varsity called sports are participating in practices every day and meets and games and all the things. We are thrilled to welcome four new teachers to the high school this year. This is Babino for art, Mr. Cunningham for science, Mr. Imanzoni for STEM, and Mrs. Bradley for chorus. Overall, it's been a great first week, and in addition, I regret to inform you that I won't be able to make it next week. I have a prior commitment, but Mr. Zimmer will be reporting, and I will be back the following board meeting.
Anyone have any questions for Isabella?
I should call your bell, all right?
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay.
Is, um, what's our opportunity? Wasn't there the opportunity passed for board reps to reach out to the other two schools in the school, elementary school? Who are the contact people?
Sure, well, I think you meet with Mr. Zimmer, you're right, so Bella can meet with Mr. Zimmer, and we can have Mr. Through Mr. Zimmer, he can help reach out to the other two buildings if they have any news to report from their student councils, or if there's no clubs at the elementary school, but there's any news to report, we'll make sure he does that.
I also have a sibling in the middle school, so I can get the news from there, and then I'll find my way to the elementary schools as well.
Yeah, no, it's, you know, it's good for everybody to hear what's going on in the other building, you know. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions for Bella? Thank you. Okay, under business and operations, budget transfer. Be resolved, Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent approves the following budget transfer for 2019-20 school year as presented to the board at this meeting. Budget transfer number 91902 for $214,156. Can I have a motion, please? Seconded by Mike. Discussion?
Lisa, I just had a chance to quickly review this, and I wanna tell you, this is the first year, I'm pretty sure, it's the first year since I've been on the board, that I've gotten a report for month end June, because it's always been told to me, have to wait for the audit, have to wait for the audit. And it's just, this is so refreshing, and it's so nice seeing you tighten up everything with this budget transfer. This is, thank you for getting there. Yeah, because it was always revolting. This is great. We're getting there, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. So carry surplus vehicle technology. Be resolved, Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent approves the attached list of recycled computer technology equipment and dispose of it in accordance with district policy and New York state municipal and school law. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, seconded by Heather. Discussion?
Do we know the direction that this equipment would go?
Is this normally going out to bid lists, or?
I believe Carol, Ms. Podash, works with an e-waste recycler, and most of the equipment will be recycled.
This is, I'm surprised, I don't know how to, we'll put it out to a public auction.
I will check with Ms. Podash, but it says in her memo that it's obsolete and damaged beyond repair.
Well, that, and the, my question is, are we receiving benefits for the recyclers and disposing, and disposing, I think there are better ways that we can, we could send them, even if they're small enough, even obsolete equipment.
We'll check that, sure.
Is that recycling eliminating any level of exposure for us, as far as, maybe not being recycled, disposed?
Usually you get a certificate of date of destruction from the recycle bin.
Okay.
You don't want it.
It's just, any hard drives they take, they know they've got to, we don't ever want to see that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. So carry. Surplus vehicle equipment be resolved, Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent approves the following school bus to be considered surplus due to high mileage and the probability of not passing DOT inspection. Bus number 144, 2007 GMC. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, seconded by Ed. Discussion?
And that will go to bid.
Yes, it will.
See, this is, this is to my point, is that the public?
This is still usable.
Well, and is the other equipment, it's just a question of what, you know, what portions are you gonna put it in, because it's at obsolete for us, because we just, obviously, school has, especially on Maker End. Yeah, I know those capital or the access websites, OGS and stuff, where it goes, is a lot of municipalities, there's a lot of stuff on there. View by mountain to see if you use it.
Okay, um, so a motion by Mike, seconded by Ed on the surplus vehicle equipment. Any other discussion regarding that? All of the favor?
Aye.
Pose. So carry. Rejection of weight room equipment bid. Be resolved, Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent approves that in order to standardize the weight room equipment in high school, Board of Education rejects all bids for weight room equipment bid, which is held on July 30th, 2019. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, seconded by Ed. Lisa, maybe you wanna explain, does anyone have any questions regarding that, why we're?
Yeah, I, I, I'm just curious.
So, we had put some, we wanna continue to upgrade and improve the high school weight room, so we did have to put some things out to bid, but really, in retrospect, we wanna stay with the same type and company, the equipment we have there, so we don't have a mishmash of all different companies and machines. So we need to first reject the bid list, the bids that we got, and then do another motion to standardize equipment. That way we can just then buy directly the equipment that we want and need from the specific company that we've already, it's a local company that we've dealt with, and we wanna continue with that line. They don't have all different brands of machines, if something breaks, it's hard to repair, get it serviced.
These are not the kinds of bids we do all the time, so I'm sure that when they saw all these bids come in, they're all over the place, you say, wait a minute.
Right. They were.
Right, we've got, we've gotta put out a standard set, and then allow them to bid. The proposal when you put out the bid that you had, didn't specify the brand.
No, we did not specify the brand.
Yeah, I'm sure that would lead to a lot of.
And until, yes, and then we had further conversations with staff and realized that we had our points somehow raised, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. So carry. Now we're gonna standardize the equipment and the weight room. Be resolved, Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent, in order to standardize the weight room equipment in high school, the Board of Education approves to standardize the following: Our treadbills, ellipticals, and bikes will be Spirit and Precor, our rowers will be Concept, and our benches and weights will be York. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, seconded by Heather. Discussion? No discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. So carry.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Sarah?
All right, well, exactly. It was a great start to our new school year. So exciting to see Natalie, the staff, and faculty, but of course, all our students back in the building. Tom and I visited all three buildings the first and second day, so that was, it was very fun. We went to kindergarten orientation, the sixth grade orientation. Tom was at high school, I was able to be there, but, um, so great to see everyone back. Of course, now, much as Bella mentioned with the extracurriculars, we're starting to get our committees up and running as well. So this Thursday, we're going to have our first organizational meeting to get our backpack program up and running again, so this is the opportunity for anyone that's new that wants to come and be a part of that. It is on the 12th, Thursday the 12th, at 3:30 in the afternoon at the elementary school library, so if anyone here would like to go or a member of the public is certainly welcome. We partner with the Methodist Church in town, it's actually housed there. They, I don't know if any of you have seen, but I've seen on social media, they're doing fundraising for it as well. They actually continue the program through the summer and provide food for families as well. So we'll get that up and running, hopefully by next full week of school. We had the new teacher orientation since our last meeting, and this is a great, we have a huge new class this year. There was 13 new teachers.
Awesome.
So very exciting to have all that energy. It's a great combination of teachers who have a little bit of experience as well as brand new. It was a very dynamic group of people. We really did a lot between just nuts and bolts of, you know, this is how you do things in Highland, to, again, really talking about our mission statement and what that means with them in their classroom, those kind of things. So it was a great two days with our new teachers. And then I will be doing a substitute teacher training the end of the month. We, I don't know if we're all aware, but before someone subs for our district, they go through a two and a half hour training with me, and again, part of that is doing our paperwork, but a lot of it is what our expectations are for substitutes when they're in the building, you know, gives them some tips and strategies for going into a classroom where they don't necessarily know the students, how to manage, as well as what happens if the lesson plan doesn't last as long as the teacher thinks it might, you know, just some strategies like that. So any teacher that comes in, and it's much like we've talked about with bus drivers, it's very difficult to get substitute teachers. Every district is prime for substitutes, and this is a way that we can, can help our subs be successful and hopefully be loyal to us, the substitutes as well. So I always enjoy doing it. Again, you get a, our real cross section, some of it is very young, new teachers, fresh out of college, and then you also have retirees who want to continue to be in the classroom. So it's a good combination of experience and that. And then the last thing, I think two meetings ago, you approved our school counseling plan, the district-wide guidance plan. One part of that is that we need to meet twice a year with a committee to review the plan, you know, talk about any changes we might need to make, and we'd like to offer the opportunity for a board member to be a part of that committee. We're planning to meet on September 30th, which is our first full-day superintendent's conference day, at 1:30 in the afternoon. I know it's not convenient for many of you, but if a board member would be interested in being there. Our plan for the first meeting is to, really just to do an overview of what's happening in the guidance/counseling department at each of the buildings, go through the plan, and then they are going to present to the Board of Education on October 18th, so that all of you have a good idea of what happens at each building, because it really is a very different set of responsibilities from elementary into middle school into high school. So I think it'll be good for all of you to have an understanding of what that looks like. If anyone would like to be on the committee, please let me know. I can also send out an email, just a reminder, if you would like that, the date and everything, and then you can get back to me. That's all I have for now.
Yeah, that would be great, because if none of the others are interested or can't make it for that reason, maybe I'll cover that.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'll send out an email tomorrow, and then you can look at your calendars and let me know.
Just so we.
Yeah.
Any questions for Sarah? Thank you, Sarah.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to again thank Bella for stepping up and being a student up for a great year. So we had, as Sarah said, we had a fantastic opening week. I have to give a shout out certainly to our buildings and ground staff, the entire building and ground staff for just all the hardware, and they have a very limited amount of time in the summer to get all the buildings and grounds ready, and they absolutely were. Our transportation department did a phenomenal job. It's always tricky that those first few days, especially with our very young students, to make sure they're on the right buses, if all the routes are set, and we had a great kindergarten orientation, where the kids get to ride the bus, so, you know, big, big thanks to our transportation department. Again, I wanna thank Mr. Miller and Mr. Barone for coming to our opening day. We have Dave Sanderson as our keynote speaker. Dave was the last passer off of the Miracle on the Hudson flight, and talked about how moments matter, and how each thing that happened really was a moment in his life that changed the direction of life, really, because he wasn't even supposed to be on that flight, and he changed his flight to get home early. So really, his whole story, really, sunk in, and that became, kind of became the theme for the day, and you'll keep hearing me say that, moments matter. The moments matter here, because everyone, from the teachers to the bus drivers and everyone in between, we all, if you work in a school district, you have a power to have such a positive impact on students every day. So it was a great day. We, we will be doing either, we have our inserts day, we have one, we have a half day on October 31st, and we do a full inserts and election day, which is on the 5th. We're gonna be doing, it's called QPR, it's a program I've done in the past. This is a nationally recognized suicide prevention program. QPR stands for question, persuade, respond, and it teaches people how to respond and how to react and what to do if you think you see the warning signs of suicide. I was able to secure the same presenter I've had in the past, because I know this person is really good. Those were the first dates that he was available, so we're gonna book that. You first do your faculty and staff, and then just go to the students. So that's going to be our plan throughout the school year, and we'll do all faculty. It's probably gonna be, we're leaning towards probably November 5th. That way we know we have everyone in the district. So all faculty and staff for that training, and then we'll start with grades, I think the middle school level, and then start moving our way up to that. It'll take some time, it might even be more than a year, but then we'll get through all the students. So it's QPR, you can look it up, it is a very well-known program, and we talked about it, when we met with all our counselors and psychologists, they were familiar with QPR, and actually, some of them were also familiar with this gentleman who was the presenter. Some great news, I've told the board about it partly, but really haven't publicly, and the board being announced it. So we do have the Smith Hudson Study Council Awards for Excellence coming up, and this is, these are annual awards given out to people in school districts. They're nominated from school districts from Orange, Ulster, Sullivan, Rockland, in various categories. I believe we may or may not have a former recipient sitting in the audience of the Awards for Excellence. But for those of you who don't know, we have three winners this year, people being recognized as excellence. One is in the area of support services, Wade Sargent. Wade is our security guard here at the high school. The second one is in the category of community services, Steve Lawback. Steve is a local businessman and very involved in Rotary. He really is the lead on a lot of projects directly in fact with the school. He does the book project at the elementary and the middle school program. He's a big part, one of the leaders in the RIT Fest, which helps for our scholarships, and junior achievement, it's a big program. We actually have one of the biggest junior achievement programs in the state, and Steve is the lead on it. So I'll be at Rotary tomorrow. He was very touched when I announced it two weeks ago. And then the third recipient in the area of administration is Joel Freer, our elementary principal. So this, I do have the information here, I'm gonna give it to Lisa, but it is $60 per person for people who want to attend. This is on October 17th. You need to RSVP by October 4th, so if you do wanna go, let Lisa know, and she'll let Carly know, because actually, we have to send us one check from the district. So you would need to, you know, pay, make a check out to Highland Central Schools, and then the district will send you one big check. And again, that is on the October 17th, that's at Anthony's Pier 9. So that'll be a great night for Highland, celebrating some of our best. And last thing, this is a, we've just recently organized, the Rotary Club Never Sleeps, the Highland Rotary Club certainly. So on October 6th, that's a Sunday, they're gonna be doing what's called a bike quest. The flyers should be going home tomorrow, if they didn't go home today, with the elementary students, then they'll be available for middle school. It's really geared toward, certainly, elementary and the middle school students. This will be at Tony Williams Park, and, you know, with the fact that we have a rail trail right here, that the middle school is incorporating bike riding into phys ed classes, so there's a whole bike safety program. They'll have bicycle experts there, they'll do safety checks on the kids' bikes, they'll get a free bike helmet, and then they'll culminate, they'll have some other programs, and then they'll culminate with actual bike riding right on rail trails. That's October 6th, it's a free event. The flyers go home, or I believe it's, you know, from, you know, 10 until 2, I believe most of the hours, but the flyers will be going home. So that'll be a great event, and again, thanks to the Rotary for putting that together. That's all I have, Mr. President, this time.
Any questions for the superintendent? Okay. We'll move on to under Board of Education, new business. Certification of Lead Evaluators, Classroom Teachers, Section 3012-D. Be resolved, Board of Education, pursuant to the provisions of educational law, Section 3012-B and Part 30-3.10 of the Regents Rule hereby certify that the following individual have completed all the necessary training to be certified as lead evaluators of classroom teachers. I won't name all of them, but can I have a motion to accept? Motion by Ed, seconded by Mike. Discussion?
It's a standard every year, because they have to do this to enable the evaluations to be official.
Yeah.
Yes, we have, Wendell and Roebach comes from Bosse's and does a training for every certification.
Okay, so all the questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. So carry. Code of Conduct Manual, be resolved, Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent approves the Highland Central School District Code of Conduct Manual for 2019-20 school year as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, Can I have a motion please? Motion by Tom, seconded by Mike. Discussion?
I wonder how he can handle it, you know.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Ulster County School Board, uh, I believe it's their kickoff meeting, keep it a local event, uh, no, so.
Yeah, keep it local.
Yeah, keep it local event, RSVP by September twenty-third. That event takes place on October tenth, two thousand nineteen, just an FYI.
I want some information on that, Mr. President, if you want. Um, we, we received the invitation from Ulster School Boards, and I do applaud them, that, you know, uh, you know, I've attended all the meetings. Sue, I believe has been pretty much every meeting, and I know that, uh, people, when they can make it. They're trying to, you know, kick off the year with some, you know, you know, good information, good discussion, hopefully amongst the school districts. So, uh, at this meeting, it'll be their regular meeting, they'll start at six, uh, they'll, I'm sure they'll have some dinner for us. Then at six thirty, the meeting usually then officially kicks off. What they had asked for us to do, uh, they're saying, at this meeting, we're inviting you to present two of your school board accomplishments from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and then one current goal that your board is working on. So they're asking you, would you mind sending, if you'd like to do this, to send a PowerPoint of two to five slides, uh, with this. So Sarah and I and Lisa, we took the liberty of getting together and putting together a draft presentation for the Ulster School Board, and certainly we want your blessing on it. And this is a time for, you know, there.
What's the difficulty, there's tangible examples everywhere.
Yes. So, you know, this, you know, if we wanted to have a larger discussion about, you know, for Highland's purposes of, you know, council. This is really for specifically for this meeting, we had to keep it to two things from last year and one thing for this year. So again, last year, this is what we said were district accomplishments. We closed down our project, uh, and you can see, you know, we included then some of the things that we did in order to close that project down. And again, we, you know, we're seeing the, uh, the benefits of having the cameras and the swipe card system. And then also, you know, that great news that we received, uh, you know, late in the spring, that we were named a recognition school, our attendance and graduation rate at ninety-five percent, and we did very well on the region's exams. This is our chance to brag a little bit at Ulster, again, if we can have a bigger discussion amongst ourselves about things we want to work on. And then for this year, uh, we'll re, this, they wanted one current goal, so we felt, well, this is certainly a current goal. And we'll rename that current goal, we call the area emphasis, but it's current goal. And our STEM, you know, we want to develop our STEM program this year and really get it down. So we hired, you know, high school person last year, uh, we hired, we created the elementary person for this year. And now throughout this school year, we'll provide time for each of the levels, the elementary, middle, and high school STEM person to get together so they can build a K through twelve curriculum for STEM. So we felt these were things that we would want to share amongst the districts that we're proud of. And then I don't know if they'll want that, but, uh, as always, I say make this coming year better than the one before. So you, you don't have to tell me now, but if that's okay with you, that was going to be the presentation we were going to send for the purposes of this Ulster meeting.
I like it.
Okay?
Yep.
Great, thank you, and thank you to Sarah and Lisa for helping with that.
Okay, and the other FYI is.
And certainly let Lisa know if you can make that meeting, I'll be there.
Okay.
Yep.
October tenth.
October, yeah, it's the same night, I believe, at our National Society of Inductibles.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, so I will be at the National Society of Inductibles on the, up, up.
Oh, yes, you should be bragging.
Oh, yeah. We got a lot of great stuff going on.
Okay, and the other FYI, what Tom mentioned earlier, is the Mid Hudson Student Council Awards of Excellence, Study Council Awards of Excellence, Excellence. All right, uh, anyone have anything for Good Welfare of the District? In a little business, we're going to pick up on. All right. So open the meeting back up to public comment? Good.
Station Allison, I have a son in fifth grade, and he had the pleasure of going to the STEM classroom the other day, and he very much enjoyed it, uh, thank you for giving him the opportunity a month ago. And I'm glad it happened before he moved to middle school, he had the chance, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to the meeting.
Yes.
My name is Sean Rick Reynolds, I have two children in this district, one in, uh, second grade and one in seventh grade. But I want to ask a question about the backpack program, um, do you, I, I'm also a teacher. But did you ever consider possibly asking your, uh, teacher union to ask teachers if they would like to donate money through their paychecks? Because that's what we do in our district.
Oh, really? Oh, that's an idea.
Seems to work out pretty well.
Okay.
I think the lowest is like three dollars per paycheck.
That's fantastic, all right, look at that, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I do that, your back here?
We'll, we'll look into it.
This is all, right, there's methods for those.
Funding is always.
That's great. That's great, wonderful to do.
Yes, since, since you brought backpacking. Um, in Poughkeepsie, the high school kids, um, they have like a culinary arts program, and they, um, help put the backpacks together with the, oh. Anyway, so it's part of their service credit in the high school, I don't know how that would work with the church.
Yeah, this is our, our second year of, of really managing it as a schoolwide and working with, uh, the Methodist Church. Last year, we were able to, we sent out a schedule, it was mostly teachers who signed up to pack. We sent out about forty-three, forty-five backpacks a week. Um, so, yeah, we're, we're looking at ways to keep it sustainable, again, funding is always an issue. You know, I know, um, Mrs. Galek has also had experience in a previous district, and they ran it a little bit different, so, yeah, we're always thinking, trying to figure out ways to make it run more smoothly and.
Initially, when the program began, there was a concern about giving the anonymity to the students involved, so there wasn't any question of, you know, the, so, with no stigma. Is that fine line between having students involved and being?
Yeah, they just pack them, they don't.
Yeah, there's a lot of methodologies to do that.
And I think too, in the last couple of years, it has become such a widespread program, you know, not only have like, you know, everyone's talking about it more than they did when it first started, you know, like, it, it was, it was kind of hush, hush, and now it just seems like it's.
Are our local farms supporting this?
We have not reached out, but that, that's a good idea. Part of it is the fresh produce, making sure that, um.
Well, it's still that's the pasture food service, but we get a lot, I know in Marlboro, they get a.
All right, good idea.
Farm, you know, issues.
I will say that I, the district backbone, we, we started out like that. We hadn't had it for a couple of years, we started, we were packing bags ourselves, and, um, we were actually asking for donations and stuff, and then eventually they came up with different strategies. I know one is the one from our paycheck, which seems to be working out well, and then we partnered with Hudson.
And, and we are, the Methodist Church has partnered with the food bank and, right, but it's still, you still have to pay for that, so, yes, keeping that funding for us.
Water.
Water, so maybe we should reach out to, to examine their program.
Water.
And then we get after water on their program.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
That's what I like about public comments.
Right.
Very good, yes. Thank you. Anything else? All those entertain a motion, uh, adjourned, I don't believe we're going back into executive session.
We've got a meeting next week to get that on schedule.
Yes, we're meeting next week, because I'm on schedule. So seventeen will be here at seven P M for a work.
So kind of motion to adjourn, motion by Heather, seconded by Ed.
Again, thank you for coming.
Favor. Opposed, so carry. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.